Good evening councillors and members of the public. I'm Jason Brock, leader of Reading Borough Council and Chair of the Policy Committee. I want to welcome you all again to the meeting of this committee, once again held as an online meeting. As everybody will know, on Friday, we had the sad news of the passing of His Royal Highness, the Prince Philip, Duke of Edinburgh. I think it would be appropriate therefore if we begin this evening with a minute's silence in his memory. So if I could ask you all to join with me in that minute's silence. Thank you all for joining together in that moment of reflection. I will start the meeting tonight by asking members of the committee to introduce themselves as usual for the benefit of the public and so that we can check that everybody is in attendance as expected. So when I call your name in alphabetical order, if you can pop your camera on and unmute yourself and introduce yourself in any position that you hold. So I'll begin then with councillor Barnet Ward.
Thank you, Chair. With a lot of feedback. I represent Havisham and I'm the Lead Member for Neighborhoods and Communities.
Thank you. Councillor Davine has had to step away from the meeting for a moment, but he is here tonight and will rejoin us shortly. Councillor Emberson?
Good evening, everyone. Councillor Ellie Emberson, councillor for Minster Ward and the Lead Councillor for Corporate and Consumer Services.
Councillor Ennis?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor John Ennis, still with my lockdown haircut, two big queues. I am the Southcote councillor and Lead Councillor for Housing. Thank you.
Only booked in advance as I did councillor Ennis. Councillor Hoskin?
Hi, I'm Graham Hoskin. I'm the Lead Councillor for Health, Wellbeing and Sport.
Councillor Jones has sent his apologies this evening. So councillor Page?
Councillor Tony Page, Deputy Leader and Lead Member for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport and an Abbey Councillor.
Councillor Pearce?
Evening Chair. Councillor Ashley Pearce, councillor for Churchward and the Lead Member for Education.
Councillor Robinson?
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, everyone. I'm councillor Simon Robinson, representing Peppard Ward.
Councillor Rowland?
Good evening, Chair. Karen Rowland, the Lead Member for Culture, Heritage and Recreation and an Abbey Ward councillor. Thank you.
Councillor Skeets?
Good evening, Chair. Councillor Jeanette Skeets, councillor for Thames Ward and Leader of the Conservative Group.
Councillor Stamford Beale?
Councillor Jane Stamford Beale, councillor for Peppard Ward and Deputy Leader of the Opposition.
Councillor Stevens?
Hello, good evening. I'm David Stevens. I'm Chair of the Woodland Governance Committee and I'm a councillor for Thames Ward.
Councillor Terry?
Good evening, Liz Terry, Minster councillor and Lead Member for Children's Services.
And councillor White?
Good evening, Chair. Councillor Rob White, Parkwood councillor and Leader of the Green Group of Councillors.
Thank you, everyone. So we move on then to item two, which is declarations of interest. I haven't been notified of any in advance. Does anybody have any declarations? Excellent. Moves us on then to item three, minutes of the last meeting. Any comments on these? Then are we okay to agree these as a correct record?
Agreed.
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 Excellent, thank you. Taking us on then to item four, petitions and questions. No petitions this evening, but we do have two questions, both from members of the public. And so we turn to those. And the first question is from James Denny to the Lead Councillor for Health, Wellbeing and Sport. So Mr. Denny, if you unmute yourself by pressing star six on your handset and then in your own time, very good, you're there. If I let you ask your question to councillor Hoskin?
Thank you, Chair. Much obliged. Good evening, James Denny, candidate for Peppard and Secretary for Neurodivergent Labour. Can I please ask, does the council have data on the ages at which schoolchildren and adults are diagnosed with neurodivergent conditions? And is this data broken down by gender and ethnicity? Additionally, does the council have any data regarding neurodivergence and bullying with specific regard to any serious crime incidents? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. And if I go to councillor Hoskin to respond?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Mr. Denny, for your question on a very important subject. For reasons I'm about to explain, it is quite a complicated issue to gather the information he is interested in. So I'd like to suggest that I liaise with Mr. Denny after this meeting to work with local health services on these matters. The council's adult social care services do not diagnose health conditions. Health conditions are recorded on health records. Limited data about some service users is held on the Adult Social Care Information Technology System, as we do not collect formally all health conditions for people receiving adult social care. Where health conditions aren't recorded, the Equality and Classification Framework states that health conditions that have no relevance to the individual's social care needs should not be recorded. Brighter Futures for Children has data in relation to the SEND primary care, primary need code by gender, ethnicity and age. They do not have specific dates, ages about when the conditions were first diagnosed. This information would need to be provided by health colleagues. From the January 2021 school census data, it is known that there are currently 594 children and young people identified as having autism, autistic spectrum disorder, as their primary send. 132 females and 462 males. Data is also provided on the ethnicity of the children, with the majority of children identified as having autism as their primary send, being white British. Autism would be recorded as a primary need by schools and settings, whereas formal diagnosis had been made by Child and Adolescent Mental Health Service and this has been shared by parents with the school setting. Children with neurodivergent conditions, including those showing difficulties often associated with autism, may also be represented under SLCN, Speech, Language and Communication Needs, where no formal diagnosis has been made or where a diagnosis has not been shared with the setting. Young people with undiagnosed autism and those with ADHD may also be represented under SEMH, Social Environmental Mental Health Needs. Sorry, emotional, actually. Schools and Better Futures for Children support children with SEND based on presenting needs as opposed to diagnosis. Diagnosis data for neurodivergent conditions relating to age of diagnosis, gender and ethnicity is not routinely provided by Better Futures for Children, by health colleagues, presented to them by health colleagues. However, information sharing does take place with parental consent to ensure children, young people and families receive support and services post-diagnosis and/or identification of send by health colleagues. BFSC's autism adviser is informed by health colleagues where a child or young person is diagnosed with autism. This notification enables the autism adviser to contact the family, to offer support and to signpost them to services. It may be possible to interrogate the information given to the autism adviser according to age, gender and ethnicity and date of diagnosis. The autism adviser does not receive notification regarding other neurodivergent conditions, e.g. attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. Health colleagues inform BFSC early years send support services when they identify a preschool child as having SEND. This may be in advance of any formal diagnosis of autism being made. The Portage Preschool Home Visiting Service collects data on the primary presenting needs of the children they work with, which includes both diagnosed and more commonly due to the age of the children suspected autism. ADHD is rarely formally assessed and diagnosed before age seven due to developmental features of the condition. There is no specific quantitative data in relation to children with neurodiversity and bullying, but a survey has just been sent out to children and young people who are diagnosed or self-identified as neurodiverse, asking them about their experiences, including bullying and peer relationships. This will be open until the end of April and the analysis report completed and feedback to the SEND Strategy Group in May. There will be a review of serious violent incidents undertaken by the Berkshire West Safeguarding Partnership towards the end of this year, which will consider the profiles of the young people involved and any issues of neurodiversity. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Hoskin. Mr. Denny, you may ask a supplementary question that seeks to clarify some element of councillor Hoskin's answer, but it can't introduce an entirely new question. Did you wish to ask a supplementary question?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Hoskin. I'll pass on the supplementary on the basis that councillor Hoskin invited to talk following this. So thank you for the answer and I look forward to doing that.
Right, thank you. Thank you very much for the question, Mr. Denny, and thank you again councillor Hoskin. And Mr. Denny will now remove you from the meeting, but of course you can watch the rest of it at home via the web link if you so choose. But thank you for coming along. Moves us on then to public question number two, which is Alison May to Lead Councillor for Neighborhoods and Communities. So Ms. May, if I could ask you to press star six on your handset to unmute yourself and then in your own time, ask your question to councillor Barnet Ward?
We may need to dial her back in, Chair.
Oh, dial her back in then, please. Add some excitement to the evening. And a need to fill some time.
Hello, Alison May.
Hi, Alison. It's Jason Brock again. I think we lost you, but we're now at the right moment for you to ask your questions, councillor Barnet Ward. So over to you in your own time.
Thank you. Hi, councillor Barnet Ward. My question this evening is, will Reading Borough Council agree to a moratorium on the introduction of new incinerators in England with immediate effect?
Thank you for the question, Ms. May, and over to councillor Barnet Ward to respond.
Thank you, Chair. And I'd like to thank Ms. May for her question, which quotes one of the three stated aspirations of UKWIN, which is the United Kingdom Without Incineration Network. And in order to answer the question, it's appropriate to consider it in the context of the three linked aspirations. And the full list reads as follows. One, introduce an immediate moratorium on new waste incineration capacity. Two, phase in an escalating incineration tax to complement the landfill tax. And three, adopt meaningful municipal waste reduction targets for total and residual waste. Now, whilst I share the broad intentions of those aspirations in the question, present reality is unfortunately more complex. Aspiration two proposes a tax that, according to UKWIN, estimates could raise waste management costs by £925 million per annum. As this cost would largely fall on taxpayers, such a measure should not be contemplated without requiring the government to reinvest the monies raised in environmental measures. Aspiration three refers to targets, but doesn't say who's being targeted. Local authorities across England are preparing for changes contained within the Resources and Waste Strategy, the RWS, which is part of the Environment Bill. Its progress is currently paused. It's widely expected that the RWS will require considerable changes to waste collection and waste management, including the potential introduction of deposit return schemes for a range of packaging types. The RWS also includes potentially significant changes to funding for those universal local services. As it stands, there's considerable uncertainty over what conditions and costs will need to be met by this council and others as a result of the new Resources and Waste Strategy. Energy from Waste forms a part of the wider waste management framework within the UK, and until the implications of the RWS are fully understood, it would be irresponsible of me to state a firm position. I cannot make commitments on the council's behalf when we don't know what will be asked of local authorities by national government when they publish their new strategy. That being said, I do share the question is aspiration to prevent an increase from energy from waste capacity, and I would hope in future to go further than the question asked and seek a reduction in volumes going to energy from waste and therefore a reduction in the number of incinerators in the UK. So whilst I sadly cannot give the unequivocal commitment asked for today, I can offer qualified support to the principles contained in the question and assure the question that her request will be considered by the council as soon as we're able to do so, which will be when the government has presented the new RWS and the implications of the resultant new waste management regime in England is fully understood.
Thank you for the response councillor Barnet Ward. Now, Ms. May, you are able to ask a supplementary question that seeks to clarify some element of councillor Barnet Ward's response, but it can't introduce an entirely new question. Would you like to ask such a supplementary?
No, I'm satisfied with that answer. It's wonderful to note that Reading Borough Council aspire to the reduction of introducing new incinerators, and I look forward to re-tabling the question once we receive publication of the environmental strategy.
Very much, Ms. May. Thank you very much for your question. We'll remove you from the meeting now, but obviously you're welcome to continue watching online if you so wish. Thank you for coming along this evening.
Okay.
Thank you. So that moves us to the end of questions for the evening then, and on to item five, which is decision books, a report for noting detailing the decision books that have been published since the last meeting. I haven't had any prior indications on this item and nobody's popped up in the chat to indicate, so I assume therefore we're okay to follow the recommended action and note this report.
Agreed.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'll take that as unanimous. And we'll move on to item six, Household Waste Update. And introducing this, we have Andy Edwards, I believe. So if I could go over to Andy Edwards?
Thank you, Chair. The report this evening provides an early update on the main rollout of a food waste collection service at the same time as switching to a smaller grey residual bin for over 56,000 households across Reading. This main rollout, which started in February, follows on from the successful early adopter phase for 3,000 properties all across Reading, which was launched last autumn, which lasted for 18 weeks, last autumn, sorry. The food waste collection service was available for all of the 56,000 households from the 1st of February, and as of today, the last batch of grey residual bins has been swapped out. The early figures collated on the main rollout are highly encouraging, and I believe that the projected recycling rate of 45%, which is up from the previous 34%, will be able to be achieved long term. The figures recorded for February, which are contained in the report, report that the recycling rate has risen in the first month to 45.78%, which equates to 2.34 kilograms per participating household per week, which meant that in February, 554 tonnes of food waste was diverted from landfill to a nearby anaerobic digestion plant for conversion into generating electricity and also producing an agricultural fertiliser. Since the report was produced, we have now received March's figures, but I've seen a further improvement for the month. And what we've seen is we've seen 692 tonnes of food waste has now been diverted from landfill. The rate per household has risen to 2.5 kilograms per household being collected each week, and Reading's recycling rate, I'm pleased to report, has exceeded 50% for the first time. And that means now that Reading is achieving the current national target of recycling rate, which was set for local authorities nationally, which is absolutely news. The project has been supported by a comprehensive communications campaign under the banner of Wise Up for Waste and has received some impressive engagement results. An example of this is seeing over 100,000 people watch the recent animation video produced by the communications team, which outlined the food waste process from start to finish. There have been some inevitable teething problems, given the size of the project, as the crews have been getting used to the newly created rounds and we've been delivering all of the bins out to all of the households. The project team, however, have been quickly reacting to any issues identified and have continued to refine our processes as the rollout has now been completed, phase one. Finally, the project team now switches its attention to phase two, which is to roll out the food waste service to remaining 14,000 households who live in high-rise and low-rise flats across Reading. The team will be working closely with both our housing colleagues and also other social housing providers to ensure a smooth rollout of this final phase. This final phase is programmed to start in July of this year and should be completed by March 2022. Thank you, Chair, and welcome. Any questions on the report?
Thank you, Assistant Director, and positive news and my gratitude to the team managing the project as well. So I have prior indication from councillor Barnet Ward, also have indication from councillor Ennis and councillor Stamford Beale. So if I go to councillor Barnet Ward first?
Thank you, Chair. And first of all, I'd also like to echo your thanks to the team. I wasn't on this committee back in September 2019, when you pressed the go button on this scheme, and no one back then could have predicted the circumstances that you would end up delivering this service in, in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of winter. And the hard work and dedication of the team cannot be faulted. It has been fantastic and it continues. As Andy referenced, you've got a very thorough report here, and there have been teething problems that were anticipated. A very small proportion of the households that they're delivering to, the 56,000 households, a small proportion have had problems, and the team have been acting on those and refining processes, improving processes to make sure that everyone gets the smooth service that they expect that they deserve. But I think it's also worth bearing in mind that our bin crews now empty 7.2 million bins a year. And so if one or two bins get missed occasionally, it's not great, but it's not really surprising when you're doing a service of that scale. So thank you to them and for their continued hard work, because of course it doesn't stop. They're now moving on to the high-rise flats with communal bins. But I'd also like to thank my council colleagues who are on the task and finish group, because this project is such a scale that it was run with scrutiny from all four parties. You've seen the detail in the report that's before the committee tonight. This will be very familiar to the task and finish group, because every month they've been going through reports like this and providing really constructive, useful feedback. And I would commend to the council for any new project of this scale to use that sort of cross-party task and finish group that uses the expertise from across the borough and from all of the parties. So thank you to them. And finally, I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank the people of Reading, because as Andy's just said, we are over 50% recycling rate for the first time ever in the borough, and that's fantastic. We're not going to rest on our laurels. We want to go further, but every time you've separated your rubbish, every time you've used the food waste bin, every time you've got out the RE3 cyclopedia app and checked which bin something should be going into, every time you've gone to the bring bank or taken something to a reuse site instead of putting it in your grey bin, it all adds up and it all makes a difference. And we've gone from 34% recycling to 50% recycling in two months, which is incredible. So I think it's something we can all be proud of. And I know I tend to talk about it in terms of recycling, but let's not also forget the financial saving that that represents, because landfilling waste is extremely expensive and reusing it not only takes methane out of the atmosphere, it not only reuses the resources so that we're creating fertiliser, electricity, but we're also on track to save at least £342,000 a year on our waste collection and management costs. And that's money that therefore doesn't have to be saved in other areas of the council. That's money that can be reinvested in council services, because we're not spending it on sending money to, sending waste to a hole in the ground. So it's a really good news report and I commend it to the committee.
Thank you, councillor Barnet Ward. I'll move on then to councillor Ennis.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Leader. Thank you for calling me. I certainly want to welcome the ongoing progress, note the progress. Very much welcome this report and welcome the recommended actions of noting the report. And as councillor Barnet Ward has rightly said, is that, you know, to achieve a rollout of a food waste project in the middle of a global pandemic, in the middle of a lockdown is difficult in itself. But to achieve the figures of 50% recycling, which I'm sure all the parties, you know, cross-parties will, you know, will understand and thank and note, is really good. It's really an excellent thing. I think it's been an excellent project. It's, you know, the people of Reading are very much welcomed. I would like to thank the officers and thank Andy and his team, because there has been teething problems myself, but when you call the officers, when you call Andy, and I've spoken to Andy and other officers, they've been straight out to resolve and sort the situation out, and that's really helpful. I think the start of the project, the consultation process with the early adopters, I think has been good practice. And the results have shown and the buy-in from the people of Reading. As Lead Councillor for Housing, I want to very much welcome the next rollout, the next stage in this project, which if we get the consultation right, which I know the efforts will be made, and working with the tenants in the flats or the flat areas and the social housing areas, that we can increase the figures of recycling even more. And I'm ready to work with housing officers and the environment and Andy and his team to ensure that the rollout, the next stage to the flats, which will be a challenge, undoubtedly will be a challenge, but if we work together and consult and bring the tenants and the residents of Reading and the flats with us, supporting them and working with them, I think this will be a success. So I think we should thank, I personally want to thank Andy and the team and the officers for all the hard work in such difficult conditions and that they've achieved the 50%. And, you know, and there's only one way on this, and it's more and more recycling, more and more working to ensure our climate is, you know, we're saving the climate in our way by ending landfill for a lot of the rubbish that we've collected. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Ennis. Next I had councillor Stamford Beale.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to again echo what the previous councillors have said, in particular that it's a weekly food waste collection. Before, when we moved over to the grey bins being fortnightly, there were a lot of concerns about having smelly food waste hanging around in your landfill bin for fortnight. So it is really good news that this is a weekly collection. I have had comments from some residents that actually they'd like to have two food waste bins, because they do a lot of home cooking and they generate a lot of food waste, lots of vegetable peelings etcetera, and they don't want to compost. Or people that have a lot of dog food and generate a lot of cans, a lot of recycling. Now, there isn't, they do have the opportunity to get an additional recycling bin or an additional food waste bin, which is really good news. And for those families with larger families that are generating more landfill waste, you also have the opportunity for them to get additional sacks and also to have an audit with a member of the team to see if there's any way that they can reduce their landfill waste. So it is really good that we have those exceptions to the rule, because they are needed. And I have had a lot of comments from people saying, but it must have been so expensive to replace all the bins. So it has been great to be able to say that Reading Borough Council have got a really good deal in that the grey, the old grey bins were taken away for free and reused where they could, all the old ones were crushed down and melted down to make further plastic bins. All the old ones were crushed down and melted down to make further plastic bins. And the new bins were replaced free of charge, which is really good news. So well done on that front. So thank you again.
Thank you, Councilor Stamford Beale. I mean, of course, you know, the capital, the upfront capital cost to all sorts of major projects of this kind. But as Councilor Barnet Ward has reminded us, there's ongoing savings that are really going to benefit the taxpayer in Reading. And I think you point out as well, actually, that we should have a particular thanks, I think, to the team of officers who have been doing exemplary work, working with households who struggled with the changeover, working out whether it was a question around knowledge or whether they did require some additional capacity in some way, be it extra recycling bin, additional side waste sacks, additional food waste bin. I think, you know, the team have done a really good job at making the rollout as successful and smooth as it can possibly be. Council White?
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, I'd agree with everyone else. It's great that this rollout is going really well for most people. If I was to rain on the parade a little bit, I'd complain that it was a shame that this wasn't introduced 10 years ago. I think it was 2004 when I was at some scrutiny committee as a member of the public. And I remember one of the relevant officers telling me that food waste was the main thing that we needed to be recycling out of our food waste, of our general grey bins. And that was back in 2004. But yes, it is good that it's all going well for most people. The problems that I've picked up on from constituents and other residents across the town are mainly to do with the smaller grey waste bins and missed collections. I remember that from a previous council meeting that the council unfortunately didn't get some external funding it was hoping to get to help with support and communications for residents. And so I'm interested in if the council is still trying to access some money externally to be able to support residents more and do more communicating how things should work and what extra help there is available. Yeah, so I'd be interested in an answer to that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Council White. I have no other indications from colleagues, so I will go back to the Assistant Director for anything he wants to add before moving to the vote on the recommended action. Mr Edwards?
Thank you, Chair. The only other thing I can add is just to answer Council White's last question. As part of the RE3 partnership, we use regularly all the information that's available, both there and also on a national perspective, to try and improve the communication methods that we've got across Reading. I think that what we have introduced as part of this programme, supported by the communications team, is we've got a really effective way of communicating with all local residents. You know, I'm happy to report that we're always willing to improve that. And if there is, does come up any more additional funding in the future that we can bid for, we most certainly will to try and improve the recycling message across Reading. We will always open for new ideas and new funding opportunities.
Thank you, Assistant Director. Then I take us on then to the vote on the recommended action. Not detecting any particular dissent to a report for noting. So can we all agree to note this report? Wonderful. Thank you all. And thank you once again to Mr Edwards and his team. Takes us on then to agenda item seven, the school estate fabric condition programme. And I think I have Mark Halligan to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. So Reading Borough Council have £6 million of DFE, Department for Education grant to spend on schools and nurseries' capital fabric maintenance over the next three years. So this report is seeking approval to spend that money through a three-year programme of capital maintenance work. The needs have been identified through a programme of condition surveys and the works will be targeted at the highest priority needs. So I think it's a fairly straightforward paper. That's the headline and very happy to take questions on it.
Thank you, Mr Halligan. I had prior notification from Councilor Pearce. So if I go to Councilor Pearce?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks, Mark, and the officers involved in the report and all the subsequent works that are going to follow. As with the electrical and heating plan improvements that are currently happening and running, works will be carried out, as Mark mentioned, on a priority basis after we've already consulted with all of our schools and they're fully supportive of this. It will see around £6 million spent on thousands of items of work across our maintained schools, including fabrics, roofs, windows. The work will help us reduce RBC's carbon footprint and I've asked officers as well to ensure that any opportunities for sustainable practices in these buildings and works be explored. So this will help all our educational settings be as fit for purposes as they can and be better learning environments for our young people.
Thank you, Councilor Pearce. And I also have indication from Council Robinson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just to say, we certainly welcome this. Anything that improves the schools in terms of building work, etcetera. The only thing we would say is obviously, you know, with works taking place in schools, it is important, especially given the current and the past climate over the last year, that any issues with, I suppose, disruption to teaching caused by the building work should be kept to an absolute minimum. So, you know, that is what I would say on that point. But yeah, we more than welcome this and thank the officers for the report.
Thank you, Council Robinson. I think, you know, the team always tries to keep any disruption to an absolute minimum. No other indications from colleagues. If I go back to Mr Halligan, see if there's anything you wanted to add or respond to?
Nothing to add. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Then on to the recommended action. Again, not detecting any dissent around this. Are we okay to accept recommendations 2.1 and 2.2? Wonderful. Thank you, colleagues. And taking us on then to item eight, the Digital Futures Foundation's ICT Future Operating Model update. And I have Martin Chalmers to introduce.
Thank you very much, Chair. In June 2020, this committee agreed the business case for a project to put in place a new operating model for ICT, following the end of the outsourcing contract with Northgate, which expired at the end of last month. This is the first Part One report on the project since the agreement of that case, although there were Part Two progress reports given in September and December. So coming just after full transition to the new model, it is an appropriate opportunity to reflect on the progress made and also the financial position of the project. In summary, transition has been delivered successfully on time and the overall cost is within the budget that was set. Just to give a little bit more, the model has five elements, four service contracts and an enhanced internal ICT team. The first service contract covers the energy-efficient cloud hosting of the majority of our applications and data, which had previously been hosted in a Northgate data centre. The contract for this was signed with Agilisys last October. All of our applications, which numbered over 60, and data around 12 terabytes, obvious, have now been moved into the new hosting arrangement. The formal close down of this part of the project will be later this month. One application, the Mosaic Social Care System, was not moved to Agilisys, but rather to a software-as-a-service arrangement with the software vendor. This move was also successful. There is reference in the papers to a performance issue affecting minority of users. While that is diagnosed, an alternative connection mechanism with no performance issues has been set up for those affected. The second service contract is known as Unified Communications, reflecting the fact that it's integrating our telephony into our IT. So for example, wherever possible, fixed desk phones have been replaced by soft phone applications available on laptops, mobile devices. That means users can use their RBC telephone number wherever they're working from. The contract was signed with Virgin Media Business in December. It's based on a solution called Eight by Eight. The transition from the Northgate provider telephone system to Eight by Eight was carried out in stages during March. The third service contract is known as End User Workspace. It covers the provision of computing equipment for users such as laptops, the service desk, the service management toolset. This contract was signed with Agilisys in December. Phase transition was completed on time during March. A notable feature of the new solution is an online portal, which allows users to raise service requests and incidents without having to make a telephone call. It's tracked progress on the real time. The fourth and final service contract is network management, covering the management of both our wide area communications, including secure internet connectivity and our local networks. That contract was signed with North, which has no connection to Northgate, in February and transition again was completed in March. These new service contracts are bedding in well and it's been particularly gratifying to see how well suppliers are working together to deal with such minor teething issues that have emerged. The final element of the model is the building of an enhanced internal ICT team, reflecting the fact that this is all involving taking back responsibility for the design, direction, overall management of our technology. This will give us the control that we need to enable our future digital performance. The new internal roles are being filled for a combination of transfer from Northgate, internal transfers, including from other parts of RBC, and external recruitment. We currently have just four roles for which permanent recruitment is still ongoing. Interim arrangements are in place for those. So I'd like us to turn to the financial outcome of the project. In the business case, we forecast that the total capital cost over the five-year period from 2021 would be 8.052 million. There have been two changes. The first is that there's been a shift of around 750k capital spend from 2021 to 2122. This was because we needed to postpone some upgrade and improvement work to avoid conflict with transition. Our first formal request of this committee is that it approves the carry forward of unspent capital in the ICT budget from 2021 to 2122. The second change is a very minor increase in total forecast capital spend versus the business case of 28.5k. And I apologize, this number should have been in red rather than green in papers. This small change, already incorporated into the budget signed off in February, can be attributed to the fact that, as reported at the September Policy Committee, some parallel running costs, which the business case had treated as revenue, is in fact ended up being capitalized. That minor capital increase is more than offset by the reductions in revenue costs relative to the outlined business case. The case had estimated total revenue costs over the four-year period from 2021 of 21.5 million, excluding inflation and restructuring costs. I'm pleased to say that the current forecast over that period is 471k less than that. It should be noted also that this reduction is greater than 347k of restructuring costs that were in the end incurred. These improvements over the outlined business case were largely driven by our procurements, which were also successful in obtaining significant social value commitments from our suppliers, including funded places on skills development programmes for young people from socially deprived backgrounds and support for charitable and social initiatives, with a particular focus on digital inclusion. Work is underway with suppliers to ensure that maximum value is realised from these offerings and that it's focused on areas where need and potential are taken. To conclude, our second formal request of this committee is that it notes that a post-implementation report covering the outcome of transition and the benefits realised from the implementation of the new model, including those social value commitments that we brought here in September 2021. I'm pleased not to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr Chalmers. I had prior indication from Councilor Emberson. So if the Councilor Emberson?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to start by passing my thanks to the Chief Digital and Information Officer and the team and everyone across the organisation who has helped with this smooth transition into the new operating model. Mr Chalmers has spoken at length about the various benefits of the new operating model, including the social value elements derived through the procurement process which we undertook, as well as the new enhanced team with a better focus in terms of the digital future piece. I support the recommended actions and I'm really pleased to note the financial improvements too. And subject to the amendments as spoken by Mr Chalmers, I hope that the committee is also minded to support the recommended actions this evening.
Thank you, Councilor Emberson. I also have a notification to speak from Councilor Stamford Beale.
Thank you. It's really good news that we've got this programme underway because we want our residents to be interacting with us on an on-screen basis, online basis, and to do it in the most cost-effective way possible. One of the major issues that we've had north of the river has been about the planning portal and how that hasn't been available when people have wanted to add comments to a particularly contentious planning application. Can Mr Chalmers disassure us that that will be upgraded so that those problems should not happen in the future? Thank you.
Okay, so I haven't had any other indications to speak. So if I go back to the CDIO before we go for the vote on the recommended action. So back to Mr Chalmers.
So there are two parts to my response to the points raised by Councilor Stamford Beale. The first is to say that already there have been actions taken to ensure that the issues that were affecting the planning portal have been resolved. And in particular, the main issue that occurred frequently in the past has definitely been resolved. The second point that I would make, and it's just a reference forward to a proposal that we will be bringing to this committee later in the year, is that we're currently looking at the priorities for digital improvement. Where is it that we're going to make our first changes in that on-screen presence for residents that was mentioned? And we're looking very seriously at planning being a high priority area for that. As I say, we'll be bringing some proposals to this committee in due course.
Thank you. I've had a very late indication from Councilor Robinson, but I'm inclined to take it because, you know, it's a short, it's a short evening and he looks like a Call of Duty player when he pops up. So if I go to Councilor Robinson?
That is so kind of you, Chair. Yet purely just to say, we certainly welcome this and what sounds like a very well-run programme indeed. Just one question, that is, how have you managed with change management over this programme in that these are not, let's say, usual times with a lot of staff working, obviously, from home? It would be interesting to find out whether you had any experience with that side during the programme. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Robinson. If I go back to Mr Chalmers then?
So again, it's a very well-made point and I'd say that there are two aspects to the answer. The first is that, yes, certainly to a certain extent, one's ability to communicate with staff has been limited by the, or affected to some extent by the fact that people are working from home. So for example, traditionally, it is normal to have people walking the floors when there are changes in systems to advise people on how to use them more effectively. The change in phone system being a very obvious example. We've got around that by using the technology, very much like the technology that we're using here tonight. We've had virtual floorwork walking sessions where people can drop in to calls that are ongoing to have their questions answered during the early stages of our implementations. The second point I would make though is that actually this this change in ways of working has been a source of opportunity. It's meant that people who perhaps have been hesitant around adopting new technologies in the past have been forced by circumstances to do so. We're seeing the move towards hybrid working, the fact that, you know, it is very likely that most people will balance working from home with working in the office. And I think that gives us for the future, for our future digital transformation, both for our own staff and in the way in which we work with residents, that on-screen presence that Councilor Stamford Beale refers to, I think it gives us a massive opportunity and one that we need to build on. And again, as I say, we'll be bringing proposals to this committee in due course on that subject.
Thank you, CDIO, and thank you, colleagues. So if we move then to the vote on the recommended actions, again, not detecting any dissent on this, are we okay to agree the recommendations before us? Wonderful. So that takes us then to the end of our agenda for this evening. So thank you, everybody. Thank you to all the officers. Thank you to all the councillors. And if I wish you all a very good evening?
Good evening.